It is six o'clock, we're going to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us remotely or in person. I'd like to turn it over to Alderman Moyer.
Ah, yes. Getting complacent.
That's right, you're doing good.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Seventh Ward Alderman Mike Waldron, and Alderman Large Sonia Berger at the committee of the whole and city council meetings of May 12, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Williams. I don't think I have to do a discussion, I don't know why I can't think of this. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries, thank you very much. Do we have any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move into, we have one proclamation this evening, and I can see Lori Grafton on remote. Lori, we're going to have Janine read the proclamation, and then we'll invite you to address the council.
Whereas the Kiwanis Club of Moline was founded in 1920 with 100 charter members. Whereas over the past 100 years, this Kiwanis Club has served the children in our community through the Supportive Service Leadership Programs through the schools in Moline. Whereas the club has helped with numerous community events and held many fundraisers themselves to raise money to benefit children and children's support groups in our city, as well as providing countless scholarships to outstanding graduating seniors of Moline and Alamon High Schools. Whereas not only have thousands of children in Moline alone been served in one way or another over the years, but the Kiwanis Club of Moline currently makes a significant local economic impact each year. Now therefore Stephanie Acre, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim the week of May 11 through the 17th, 2020, as Kiwanis Week. Lori?
Thank you, Janine. Lori, would you like to address the council?
Yes, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, and thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the Kiwanis Club of Moline, I want to thank you for this recognition. The main purpose of Kiwanis is to serve the children of our community, and along the way, we've always enjoyed a great partnership with the city of Moline. Way back in 1927, we helped develop a tourist camp at what is now Rocki-, or I'm sorry Riverside Park. And this was a place where there was water and electricity for cross-country travelers. And it was a premier camp in the Midwest in the pre-motel days. We've been instrumental in lighting, the lighting of the John Deere Commons. We've helped develop the Kiwanis Bike Trail along the Rock River. We've been a key player in the development of Moline Kiwanis Park. And most recently, we pledged $20,000 to the Moline Pickleball Project in honor of our 100th anniversary. So, we're a group of nice people who meet once a week. We're always looking for new members, and we appreciate the recognition today, thank you.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you so much for helping us with our first ever virtual state of the city. I hope that your club was okay with that format.
Yes, we had a lot of good reviews on that, so thank you for the opportunity.
That was fun, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, you too.
So, the agenda items, I don't believe we have any agenda items this evening. Right? So, we're going to begin with an informational, and that will be led by JB Schulte and Carol Barnes. It's the COVID-19 Budget Impact Update, our weekly update.
So, Carol, are you there? She should have sent you a-
Yeah.
I've got it.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you, Carol.
Okay.
We can see you.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
Okay, great.
Just give it a minute, okay, they got your, um, they got your, uh, information put up here, so I'll let you get started, and then I know you had a few different items that you wanted to cover, and then I'll jump in.
Okay, nope, that sounds great. Um, Don, you can go to the very first page, the agenda, we've got about eight items here on the agenda item, that's one, Don, that we're going to cover very briefly, because I know we want to leave plenty of time here for Mark Peterson's presentation. So, I'm just going to hop right into it, and Don, you can go to the next page. On pages one through three, we made copies of the Illinois Municipal League, IML, came out with some revenue forecasts. And these are preliminary revenue forecasts, and they'll be coming out with more, they have said, in the month of June. But what we wanted to do, it was really nice to finally get some, some potential projections. And so, we took their fiscal year, which is May 1 through April 30th of '21, is what they're basing their projections on. And we prorated them back onto our calendar year. So, there's one-third that is the old way from our January through April, and then two-thirds is going to be on their new numbers. And based on their forecast on four major revenue streams, they are actually projecting an increase in revenues over where we had originally estimated them to the tune of about $1.5 million. And I'm going to break it down for you. But before, but before I do that, I just wanted to say, upon reviewing all this in detail, and after our discussions that we've had over the last several weeks, we feel that we really want to remain conservative and stick with our $10 million shortfall number. But I am praying that IML may be correct with their projections, and we're going to continue to watch them, and there'll be kind of some trigger points as we actually get some actual numbers in. And, um, so yeah, I just want to briefly go through them. The four key ones are the personal property replacement tax. That's the one, um, revenue stream where they are actually, their projections would actually be a decrease, an additional, additional add to our shortfall of about $31,000. So, it's basically kind of right on where we have projected personal property replacement tax. The other big one was the income tax, and based on the numbers that they are giving us, we would actually increase our revenue by $600,000. And that is 100% revenue that would be in the general fund. The other big one, where they are not seeing the kind of decrease that we had originally, originally heard, was in our MFT transportation funds. We had talked about, when we had talked to the comptroller, that it could go as low as 50%. They are looking at a much smaller decrease now of about 15%. That revised number from IML would be about $662,000 of increase to our projections, to the good. I mean, decreasing our shortfall. And then the last big revenue stream is the use tax. And again, we've talked about this with people not being able to shop locally, that they may be shopping online. This is the use tax that would be coming from that. They are recommending that it would remain flat compared to 19, 2019. We had actually projected our numbers down.
It's me.
Can you hear me?
No, that was-
I had some-
That was me, Don had a, I'm getting out of control. Do I need to hit something, Don?
You should be fine, I was just muted.
All right. Go ahead, Carol, that was my fault, forgive me.
Okay, okay, so the very last thing on the, on the use tax, their estimate is about $250,000 greater, or to the positive, over our shortfall projection, so it's to the positive. And that would be totally to the general fund for the use tax numbers as well. So, total for the general fund, if we were to use their projections, would be about $845,000 to the good, to the general fund. The remainder, $662,000 is for the motor fuel tax. And again, we are recommending to stay the course. We're going to kind of stay with the $10 million, but it's really nice to see that there's potentially some forecasts out there that might be looking a little different than what, than what we projected. And on pages, Don, you can go to pages four and five.
Yes, Carol and I said, we want to, we want to plan for the worst and hope for the best.
You're on page four.
Yep. That's exactly right. But we did go ahead and we updated these sheets, I'm not really going to go through them, Don, you can go to the next one on page five. And you'll see there, the, the writing's kind of small, but it's several lines from the bottom. The projections that would come from IML would put us at about an $8.7 million shortfall as compared to the $10 million plus that, that we've been using. But if you go to pages six and seven, this is, and you can go to seven if you would, Don. This is the revenue, um, projections here staying along the $10 million line. And you'll see the second to the last line, if you happen to have it in front of you where you can see it. Across all funds, we are showing a shortfall of about $10,013,000. And I want you to remember that number, because as we move into the next couple of schedules, I just want to show you how all of our revenues and expenditures are tying out with our fund equity statement. So, right now, we're recommending the $10,013. That has been revised down to the good, and it leads into our next item here, that we received some good news, that we are potentially going to be receiving $477,000 from the Rebuild Illinois Bonds. And if you don't have any other questions on the revenues, I'm going to let JB kind of speak to that.
So, that's, if you guys saw that announcement that came out, it was towards the end of last week, where they, every six-month period, we're going to get the $477,000. It's going to come to us actually in the form of like MFT, but we have to separate it, and we have to use it separate of MFT. So, it's not, we can't blend those funds. They are bond funds, so they gave us some criteria, just a couple pages, you know, and kind of warned us that this has to be used for like infrastructure improvement, bond-worthy projects. So, it's got to be something that hits those triggers of like 13 years or more, it's got to be. And I, I know you and Alderman Moyer and Carol had had some emails going back and forth. And so, what we want to do is take a look, and we want to move forward, you know, sensitively, because Alderman Schoonmaker, I know I can't see you on there right now, but one of the things that you and I have had some spirited conversations with over the past is, is this what, any infrastructure projects that come forward from this, like using this funding, has to hit those I dot requirements then. So, it would have to have 12-foot wide lanes, it would have to have all their construction requirements for all their design and engineering. It's going to have to have, you know, either BAM, you know, not just six inches of aggregate, you know, compacted underneath. It's going to have to have an aggregate material that's probably mixed with some kind of asphalt, all those different things that drive the cost up. So, we're going to want to be sensitive to where we use these funds. But we did some preliminary, like I say, we just got this, the end of last week. At the same time, if you guys remember, we've been talking about the defense infrastructure, the Defense Capital Infrastructure Project Funds that the, that got line itemed in with the Pentagon this year. And we finally got that guidance, Your Honor, I know we've been waiting for that from the Roosevelt Group, and they finally got that guidance and kind of narrowed it down and gave us a summary sheet on it. And just since last Thursday, they've looked, and they have both said that the DESEP funding and this funding here would both work together to like match one another. And that DESEP funding came out as a 50% match, so as we were looking at the 16th Street Biaduct, for instance, these funds would both qualify for a project like that. And those are both ones that would have to beat a certain design standard anyway. So, so we're marching down the path of taking a look at where we could use some of these funds and, and that. But yeah, as Carol said, it's, it's some really good news that came out at the end of last week.
How much money is it?
It's $477,000 every six months over a three-year period, so it's about $2.87 million that we're going to get from the state. And then, if you remember right, the, the DESEP project, the funding from like the Pentagon is like a 50% match of something that we would use. And, and both the state and, and the Roosevelt Group have gotten back and said those, those funds would, would pair up for a project like this. So. Carol, I guess I'll go ahead and let you jump in, I know you want to talk a little bit about the bond refi and the credit cards.
Yep. And before we get to that, Don, if you could move us towards page number 12. Thank you. This is actually a new spreadsheet that I'm going to continue to give you on a weekly basis when we do our updates. This is actually showing major fund expenditure reductions. So, it's all the expenditure reductions across our major funds. So, I tried to consolidate it down to a one-page summary. And you can see there by fund, like if you go down that first row for the general fund, you go clear down to the very bottom, we are showing on this sheet kind of like the revenues. It's the budgeted revenue, or budgeted expenditures against the COVID projections. So, you'll see our, in the general fund, we had budgeted expenditures of $45,897, and the new COVID at $43,452. So, to date, we've cut about $4.2 million of expenditures. That is the net amount, because there have also been a lot of ups and downs. So, we've actually cut a lot more than the 2.4, because they've been offset by some revenue. But these are the net changes in the funds. And as the weeks go by, we'll spend a little more time on this page, but I kind of wanted to introduce it to you. And I know we want to have plenty of time here for Mark, Mark's presentation. But if you go clear to the right-hand, right bottom column, you'll see $5,926,000. That number I want you, just like the revenues, I want you to remember that number, $5,926,000. I'll show how everything's tying out. If we go to the next slide then, Don, this is a page that I introduced last week. This is a one-page summary that includes all of our funds with expenditures, and it gives a little bit more detail. This schedule is the one that we continue to use as we are preparing some summary sheets for council's review, hopefully here within the next week for items that are $50,000 and above. Again, if you go to that bottom right-hand corner, you'll see $5,926,000 at the bottom. So, you'll see how all these expenditures, with a little different way of presenting it, are all tying out. What I would like to show you is this, this week, we have added in professional services the credit card fee elimination for the utility funds. If council approves our resolution tonight to eliminate the credit card fees for the remainder of this year, it should save us about $50,000. And then going forward, that's going to save us about $120,000 annually, if the council approves it tonight. So, we have included that $50,000, just to show the difference. And then on our debt service, if you go down to the debt service line, we have added our bond refinancing that came from last week, and it's the savings of $45,941 for the remainder of this year. Going forward, that's going to be in excess of a half a million dollars. So, we have, have some good savings to be showing you guys tonight.
Carol?
And then, yeah.
Your Honor, your mind, if I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Went, is that who that is?
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't see.
Um, regarding that, that debt service, that savings of the $45,000, the revenue anticipation notes that we've got that, because those things have been being paid out of water and WPC. That particular, uh, debt service has been being paid out of that. Are we going to be paying that interest on an ongoing basis to water and sewer? Or was that something that at the end we are going to tie up? Because I don't know if we're actually doing expenditures out of the general fund for that at all.
Um, right now, I know, I believe the way Kathy Carr had set that up, based on the actual capital project when it was completed a couple of years back, was that it was set up as four years of RANs from water and sewer. And then at the end of that, which I, I don't remember, I think this was the third year for the water and sewer, so there still potentially could be another RAN from water and sewer next year. And then after that point, potentially, if there are no projects out there, we could consider taking money from the general fund and/or looking at the water and sewer as well to help support it. But I think after four years that that pretty much covered the project cost. And that was the justification for using those RANs to help support this TIP.
Right. But, but, so then there shouldn't be any payments out of the general fund for that debt service this year? So, there wouldn't be any cost savings, it would just be a lower RAN that we'd have to pay back in the future to water and PC? Right?
Yeah, there's not, there's, there is nothing coming from the general fund. But it is the savings overall in that TIP number seven. And we just, we just adopted to pay, you know, to set up the RAN in TIP number seven now. So, we would be proceeding with that, paying principal and interest back to water and sewer over the course of time, because we know, well, probably in another year or two, that the fund's going to be short again. And so, unless council wants to change that, it's just making TIP number seven cash flow a little bit better these first couple of years until those RANs, additional RANs drop off to help support that fund.
Right, but to classify that as a, as a general fund savings this year, I don't think that that's right. It's just a reduction in outlay from water and WPC, right?
Okay, I've got, I'm so sorry, Mike, I'm not listening, I'm not listening good to your question. This is a summary across all funds. So, it's savings across all funds. Don, if you can go back one slide, and if you look down the column that will say other special revenue funds, it's like mid-column there. I don't know if you guys can see it, or if you're, you have a set, a set of the handouts. But if you follow the other special revenue, that includes all of our TIP funds. And if you go two-thirds of the way down into debt service, you will see a change of $45,941, that's going against the TIP funds, a reduction in TIP, not the general fund.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does that help? Okay, and I'm so sorry, I wasn't listening close, Mike.
Hey, Mike, can I ask you a favor? I think you have your video turned off, and maybe you have that intentionally turned off, and that's okay. But if you have a question, will you try doing the raise your hand feature? I want to see if that works, just to smooth our interactions.
He muted himself.
Are you mute, Mike? Oh, can I see you now? I can see you now, though, I can see you.
No, when I, when I went to mute myself, I think I accidentally hit the video button, sorry about that.
It's not, I mean, it's okay, but I couldn't, if you were raising your hand, I wouldn't have been able to see you. So, I was wondering, could you try to electronically raise your hand, we'll just do a little quick test? Do you notice that? Do you see in the middle of your screen, at the bottom, if you've got the app? Do you have the app, or are you doing the web-based one?
I'm on the web-based one.
Oh. Download the app next time, it's much more friendly. All right, never mind, continue on, Carol.
Sorry.
Okay. Again, Don, if you go one page down, forward, again, you'll see in that bottom right-hand corner that $5,926. And now, if we go to our fund equity that ties out both revenues and expenditures, if you can take me to page 23, Don. You guys are familiar with this, this shows all funds across the board. It includes all revenues and all expenditures. So, as we go through the next few weeks and we continue to have changes, you'll see all these numbers changing, but I want, I just wanted to show how they tie out. If you look in the last column and you look at the revenue line, if you recall, I told you to remember that $10,013. That ties back with the total change on the revenue sheet that keeps repairs every week. So, you can kind of see now how this, this works with revenues. And then if you go down, two-thirds of the way down the page, you'll see the $5,926 on expenditures. Again, if you follow each one of the funds back, you can see how, how those numbers are affecting every single one of the, the funds instead of just the summaries that I, that I've been providing, so. And with that, if you don't have questions, I'll kind of move on, so we keep it a little bit brief tonight. But, um, I just kind of wanted to show you that we're trying to make sure all of our totals. And then, of course, this all ties out with our line item detail. If there's ever anything that people are wanting to see, all the revenues and expenditures tie out to the line item. So, the next item on the agenda is, um, oh, the update on the Tax Layer, JD, if you wanted to take the lead on this?
Yeah, yeah, well, and I, I had been communicating with the Finance Director and the Director of Operations down at the Tax Layer Center, and I knew that after Dirk had given that update last year during the budget process that, that Mayor and Council would be interested in finding out kind of what their status is, knowing that they've been kind of shelved also during this, this governor's order. So, as you saw last year, at the end of 2019, they had $7,627,000 in reserves, and Carol put Dirk's kind of update on what our financial obligations are to them, you know, when they have shortfalls, and that's, that's in your packet that came out today. But in my communications with them, I want you to know, the mayor jumped in early on when the governor's order came out and assisted them, and trying to make sure that all the venues kind of were working in the same guidance and the same guidelines, so they're competing venues, you know, we're going to have any kind of upper hand with them, you know, and that as far as the competitive nature of their business. But now, they've kind of come together and they're working collaboratively and collectively to try and make sure as, as we come out on the other side of this, that they can all kind of move forward in, in a new, in a new day and a new dawn. But, but they're saying if it's, if it, worst case, we go till March of 2021, before they were actually able to open back up and have, you know, people in congregations and that, they could, they could lose up to $6 million in revenue on their revenue side of the ledger. And the impact that would have on their reserves is, you know, right now, their forecast, and that, that could impact their draw in the reserves anywhere from $1.8 to $2.2 million in that, in that reserve that we had registered back at their end of year 2019. If they move forward with capital projects that they had in their operations budget this year, that could be an even bigger draw on that, on that reserve amount, because obviously they don't have any income coming in from any, any revenue from any events. But some of the things that they're talking about, they're getting together collectively to have a conversation with the governor's office, I think maybe even this week or next week, with, with this group from all over in Rockford and, and up in Arlington Heights and in Peoria and that. But they've got different entertainers that are willing to come and play for 1,500, a crowds of 1,500. So, if they get a way to kind of slow reopen and slow introduce themselves back into the market, you know, they're looking for different ways to reinvent themselves and, and serve and, and generate some revenue. So, it's, it's encouraging, I guess, but, but, you know, it looks like worst case, they could, they could have a dip into those reserves.
Can you clarify, JD, you said that they'll have a $6 million revenue hit. What's their employment status, what's their expenditures situation?
I'm sorry, I didn't touch that, they're, they're down to, they have eight staff members. They've got kind of a skeletal group working right now.
How many do they normally have, how many?
Um, I, I think upwards of, you know, 100, depending on the event. They have a lot of temporary folks that come in and out and, and that, but I think that-
What's their normal, like, staff, operations staff, because it's more than eight?
Uh, let me get you that answer exactly, but I think, no, no, it's, it's much more than eight. I'm thinking it's, it's around 30, I think. But again, a lot of those are permanent, part-time, and that, I'll, I'll get you, let me, let me find those numbers out exactly.
Okay. And so, the, I, I guess I don't understand what you presented. So, they're going to have a $6 million hit to their revenue side, and we don't know what the expenditure side is, but it must be something that results in a $1.8 million gap, is that?
Yeah, they, they have to have events to, you know, generate the revenue, obviously. And so, they said if they have just the expenses through March of 2021, the end of their year, and no revenues, that it could be, you know, a $6 million hit on the revenue side of the ledger. But those expenditures, yeah, could take $1.8 to $2.2 million out of their reserves, so.
So, they'll have $1.8 million expenditures just in the operations of not operating? Those eight employees will cost $1.8 million, I'm just trying to understand it, and then-
Yeah, and whatever operations, maybe obligations that they had to certain, um, um, events, maybe to have those, what do you want to say, reserved, like for them to come perform and whatever. I can, I'll, I'll get you more of that detail on the expense side of it.
Okay.
But that's just kind of them trying to give me a little bit of their forecast.
Yeah, I'd like to have a little bit of details on that.
And, and Your Honor?
Yeah?
Um, I might add, one of the main reasons, of course, that we're bringing this forward to you is that last year during the budget process, we, we talked about the tourism fund and the ending fund balance. And Dirk had actually prepared a memo that I enclosed with the handouts during, for our budget discussions last fall. And as you know, the city may need to cover future operating deficits at the Tax Layer. And so, we kind of wanted you to have a feel for what's happening with their, with their reserves. And then as we look at our own, currently in the tourism fund, we have about $650,000. We had talked about, as I prepare a fund balance policy, to also include the tourism fund. And I will do that when I get the policy done here in 30 to 60 days. But for now, I'm really recommending with COVID-19, and we kind of see where everything lands, we come out of this for a year or so. If we're able to leave that $650,000, I think it might be wise- fifty thousand, I think it might be wise just to leave it for now until, until we see how everything plays out with the Tax Layer.
Thank you. So we can have a, a little bit more details of what that?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman.
Sorry about that. So with that, we think that their reserves will go from, I think in the memo, they have a seven point five million dollar, or seven point six million dollar reserve. We think that it's going to drop a, a million and a half or two million if this goes on. Is, is that kind of the bottom line, JD? So they'll still have about five million dollars, or five and a half million dollars in reserve? Is that where we think they'll be?
They said one point eight to two point two, Alderman. And then they said they had about five hundred thousand dollars worth of capital projects in their budget this year. And depending on whether they move forward with those, that could, that could add to that. So maybe up to two point seven million would draw off those reserves if they move forward with that, with that. And I don't know what that capital project was, but I'll find out for you, Mayor, also, what that is, as well.
So, so that would result in, in them having about four point nine million dollars still in reserves?
Correct. It would, yeah. It would have a significant amount on it. Yep.
Okay, that's good, because, yeah, obviously, the concern is if they were going to draw those all the way down, then we're, we're next up. Now, in, I think on page, I don't know where we've got it. On page thirteen, are, are we taking a hundred and ten thousand dollars out of tourism and transferring that into the general fund as part of your guys' proposals?
No, we actually pulled that back into the tourism fund. That's what brought it back up to six fifty. It had just been over a little over five hundred, I think, when we adopted the budget. But, yeah, we're, we're pulling that back in from planning. Any other questions on the Tax Layer? We just wanted to keep you abreast. You know, as we get information, we're going to keep the council updated.
Thank you.
And the last item then, and again, this is just very briefly, wanted to give you an update on the police and fire pension funds. And I know Alderman's co-maker attended the last board meeting for fire. But just wanted to give you a quick update. As you know, the stock market and interest rates and everything have been falling. For the first quarter, uh, for the police, I'm, I'm sorry, for the fire pension, they actually lost about four point four million dollars. It's on page twenty-nine, Don, page twenty-nine, of investment return. Fortunately, that was through March, four point four, um, loss. During the month of April, they did have a net increase in returns of over two million dollars. So they've made about half of that back now through the month of April. But of course, for the year, they are still down a couple million dollars. And then the same holds through. If you go to the next, um, page thirty-one, Don, you'll see the police pension fund. And they had losses in investments of about six point two million dollars. It's up at the top, the top of the page. And again, during April, they came back with about three million dollars, um, of net investment savings. So, but they're still down for the year. And as you know, those funds depend primarily on three funding sources, the employee, the employer, and then in the past, we've used property taxes to supplement the actuarial recommended funding. So as the year goes on, and we anticipate to get our actuarial report here out the end of May or the first part of June. So we'll keep you updated and, and get those distributed just as soon as we receive it. Um, so we'll kind of see how that impact of everything, how, how that's going to pan out for the upcoming twenty-one budget. And then I think it's also going to be impacting the 2022 budget as well. So, but I just wanted to have, you know, I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of this. And we'll continue to give you quarterly updates on those pension funds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we wanted to be brief, so Mark, get started. So unless you guys have some other questions for me, Allison and I are having our meetings with the department heads, going through the, the core in our car, and we'll continue working on that. And, but I guess, reach out if you have questions, and-
Can, can you remind me, so we haven't made any adjustments? We're, we're still making the assumption of the ten million dollar revenue hit, even with the IML update? Is that right?
That's correct.
And right now, we still have a missing one point five million?
Approximately one point five four six, I think, at the last look with the adjustments that she's made.
So everything's kind of the same as last week, as far as that? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Oh, so now we're going to move into the work session, and that's going to be led by Mark Peterson. Mark, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay. Do you have control of the screen, or are you having, how are you handling it?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just wondering who controlled the screen.
Okay. Let me, I do, I do have some slides to go through with you. But first of all, let me just make some introductory comments, if I may. First of all, I'm happy to be here. Wish it was under a little different circumstances. Obviously, we've got kind of a sobering discussion ahead this evening. And, and, you know, first of all, I'd like to say, I don't have any magical answers to this. I wish I did. There's so much that we do not know about this current COVID-19 economy that we're in. And particularly, the long-term implications of this are unknown. I also should, I think it's important to, to state that unlike other recessions that we've dealt with in the past, the past fifty years or so, the, the different, you know, the different, really distinction about this particular recession, and I think it clearly qualifies for recession, is that it was essentially artificially created, at least in part, through government mandated social distancing. And I'm not here to argue whether that was appropriate or not. It's a fact. So if we try to achieve or, or draw parallels or comparisons to other recessions, this one is different in that regard. And that, for that reason, it's a little hard to understand what are the long-term implications of this particular recession. We just, there's just so much we don't know. Now, I, I need to admit to you upfront that, from what I am seeing right now, and, and, and what I've heard and read, and I've talked to a lot of local government professionals, I, I have, I have a rather pessimistic perspective on the future of this economy as it relates to municipalities. I just want to be upfront about that. I certainly hope that I am wrong. But I, I think that municipalities, not just Moline throughout the country, are going to face some very, very challenging decisions going forward. It is my sense that this is not going to be a short-term phenomenon. Again, I hope I'm wrong, and I might be, but that's my perspective. And I'll, in, through the slides, I'll explain why. But I also think it's important that, to share with you that for some time, I have felt that the, the revenue model for local governments was basically failing. And this is something that's happened over a period of years. I think even you've experienced, it's becoming increasingly difficult year after year to balance your budget without having to raise taxes and fees. So I think some of the, the implications of the COVID-19 situation, and some of the things that I think municipalities will have to do, were things that probably were going to have to be done eventually anyway. I think COVID-19 is accelerating dramatically the pace in which those changes occur. But I really think a lot of these, these latent financial problems were around and would eventually reach a point where municipalities, including Moline, would have to address them. So even if COVID-19 did not occur. So clearly, there's some difficult decisions for you ahead. You've already done a lot of work in the current year budget, and, and I'm going to be focusing a little bit more of my conversation on the long term. But as we, as we walk through these slides, I'm going to share with you, again, my perspective, and hopefully provide information that supports what I believe is, is essential for cities to act as quickly as possible in getting a plan in place to address these financial challenges that are coming. It's one thing to deal with the current year budget, and there's some low-hanging fruit that we've able, able to, to, to help sort of shore up that budget. But I think what I'm most concerned about is years two, three, and four, and beyond. And again, there's a lot we don't know. So why don't we get into the slide presentation? And, Don, if you could go to the next slide. And, and, whoops, there should be one, there should be one before that, Don, I thought. Purpose of the work session, desired outcome? Should be, should be one slide before that, Don.
The only slide that was in there, there was a blank slide that I got, but it didn't-
Okay, well, I'll just cover that. The purpose of the work session is to begin a conversation about what do we need to do as the city of Moline to, to, to face this challenge that, that is ahead of us. And again, we, it's, it's sort of like facing an unknown assailant, if you will. We just don't know what form it will take or how long. But I think the desired outcome is to reach some consensus on how should we proceed? And what, what do you all need to do to safeguard the, the financial health of the city of Moline going forward? So the question is, what will be the financial impact? Short-term, I think it's becoming a little clearer, although it's still a moving target, as we heard tonight. Revenues are still ebbing and flowing. We still don't have a good handle on, on where we're at. But, but I think it's becoming clear every day that, that we're going to face some pretty dramatic revenue shortfalls in the current year. The long-term impact is what is probably even more uncertain. But the potential impacts are, are overwhelming and, and going to be very challenging. So, next slide, Don. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the short-term again. And I have spent some time on the phone with Carol. She's been very generous with her time going over her projections. And, and she talked tonight about this ten million dollar across-the-board revenue loss, revenue shortfall. And, and that is a moving target. And, and I think it's a very prudent number. I think she has used very reasonable assumptions in arriving at that number. But she will be the first to admit, it's going to take constant vigilance and constant fine-tuning. And, and every month, you're going to get new revenue figures in. You're going to hear new projections from different outside groups. But no matter how you slice or dice it, the revenue loss is going to be substantial. And you have already done a lot to, to implement a number of expense reductions to, to address this one-year problem. A lot of those are kind of deferring expenditures, deferring capital expenditures. You deferred some construction projects, particularly in the Parks area. You, you've frozen new hires. Those are kind of short-term things that can work in a current year. But, but looking into the future, you can't defer capital expenditures forever. So, but I think you've acted very prudently, and there's still maybe some cuts that have to be made. But it sounds like your staff is on top of it, and you're in a, you're in a good position to weather the current budgetary, the current fiscal year problem. Next slide, Don. Now, the long-term is, is really what we're here to talk about, or that's what I'm going to spend most of my time talking about. What does the future hold? And we just, there's a lot we don't know. But I think frankly, you, you can't wait and act until you have all the answers. You've got to make some assumptions. JD said it earlier, we plan for the worst and hope for the best. And there's some truth to that. I don't know that you can, you can plan for the absolute worst-case scenario, but you certainly, you, you want to be a conservative in your, in your projections. So it seems to me, the answer to that last bullet point question is, no, we can't wait until we have all the answers. We need to, we need to apply what we know today, make the best projections that we can, and then take necessary action sooner than later. And I'll talk more about that. Next slide, Don. So here's, here's a couple of key questions that we'll try to answer in this presentation. When will we know what the future holds? And, and when must we act? So the next slide, I think, I think we can look at, at what we know today, Don. And next slide, thank you. That's perfect. And, and it tells a lot. So GDP declined in the first quarter of 2020 by four point eight percent. That's a staggering number. Given the fact that, that half of that quarter, coronavirus was not an issue, and, and the economy was doing quite well. We've taken a four point, four point eight percent hit. Projections are, are all over the map for the second quarter, but all of them are higher. Even the most optimistic of projections are higher in terms of the rate of decline of GDP. I noted that in the slide, that the Congressional Budget Office is projecting a twelve percent GDP decline in the second quarter alone, while economists from a number of large banks are projecting as, in the thirty percent range of GDP decline. That's, that's staggering. And, and again, that, some of that GDP is being cushioned, decline's being cushioned by three trillion dollars of federal stimulus money that's being injected into the economy, as well as the Federal Reserve Bank pumping money into the economy. That's, that's providing some cushion. Without that, we'd be even in worse shape. And then, of course, the April unemployment numbers were, is what we, I think, expected, nearly fifteen percent, which again, is incredible. We haven't seen those numbers in, you know, almost a hundred years here. And frankly, those, that fifteen percent calculation, or fourteen point seven percent, was developed in mid-April. Since that time, there's been three million additional unemployment applications. So we're, we're well over that fourteen point seven percent, and probably closer to twenty percent at this stage, which is, is, is terrifying. So, Don, go to the next slide. I've tried to compare these numbers with some financial calamities of the past. So if you look at the Great Depression back in thirty-three and thirty through thirty-five, and again, it was a different time, and you can't draw direct parallels. And the Great Recession of oh-eight, oh-nine, just look at the numbers that we're experiencing today. And I'm, I've tried to plug in the most optimistic year-end projections, and they are projections at this point. We don't know if those will be accurate or not. Could be worse, hopefully will be better. But that, I think, puts in perspective how severe this current economic situation is right now. And that's part of what has, has sort of created, for me, a, a very pessimistic prognosis as to what we're going to be having to address as municipalities in the future. Next slide, Don. And so, you know, there's, we know the shelter-in-place mandate will continue through the end of May. I'm hoping, and I fully expect, that will be relaxed to some degree in June. But there still will be shelter-in-place mandates in Illinois, even after, probably through the, through the summer, maybe end of the fall, as long as the virus remains a health threat. And there are a lot of people that even if, if shelter-in-place is not mandated, a lot of people will, will strictly observe that just to protect their own health. And I understand that. So I think those things will continue to, to drag on our economy throughout the rest of the year, and, and probably into next year. The other thing, that last bullet point that, that I'll mention, and it concerns me as it relates to municipalities, it's the state of Illinois. They're looking at, the governor announced in mid-April, a seven billion dollar shortfall in their budget, uh, over the next two years. And they have no reserves. They have no rainy-day fund. I, I dare say, additional taxes are untenable. So where do they look to shore up their, their budget? I fear that some of the pass-through revenue to municipalities could be jeopardized. And if you look at income tax and sales tax that come from the state, those are huge revenue sources to municipalities. If those were to be even partially held back, that would further exacerbate a, a really, really difficult budget situation going forward in years two and beyond. So again, next slide is fine. It's, again, it's, we, we don't know when it will bottom out. I, I just don't know. I, I, I can't imagine that the, that the economy will rebound before there's a, a vaccine for COVID-19, or, or really effective treatments. And who knows how far those are? Could be, I've heard eighteen to twenty-four months away. There's some- There's some optimists that think it might be available by the end of the year. But I think the economy will continue to struggle until such time as the virus is no longer a threat. Next slide, Dawn. And then, once we hit bottom, how long will it take to recover? And let's just look at the 2008 recession, maybe as a predictor. It was an 18-month recession and recovery was 48 months. So if the COVID-19 economic downturn continues for another two years, then we could be looking at as far out as 2026 before we fully rebound. Again, that's a lot of guesswork, a lot of unknowns, but again, trying to sort of plan for a worst-case scenario, I think, is prudent. And if that's the case, boy, municipalities are going to really struggle over the next few years. Next slide. So I think based upon what we know today and using just very reasonable conjecture, I think it's safe to assume that the economic impacts of COVID-19 are not going to go away any year. They're not going to end at the end of this fiscal year. They're going to continue, and they could very well be severe. And several major municipal revenue sources are, will likely continue to be weakened because of this state of the economy. Maybe they'll rebound some. Maybe it won't be quite as bad once the economy sort of reopens. But I would submit that it's wishful thinking to expect that next year, that things are going to get back to the normal situation. It's very doubtful. Next slide. So what do responsible cities do? I think responsible cities develop a plan, a plan of attack, a response plan as quickly as possible for how you are going to, what changes you're going to make in order to bring the costs of local government in line with available revenues. And in some cases, it's kind of a reinvention of what you do as a municipality, looking at fundamental services. Can you afford to provide them? Or do you have to adopt different, more economical, efficient delivery models? You mentioned restructuring of debt will be essential. And looking at every nook and cranny in your organization to try to find savings, again, in order to bring your costs down in line with revenue. And the one area you can't count on for savings for a long period of time is infrastructure maintenance. You can do that in the short term. I think it's, there are certain things you can defer, short term, but long-term, you defer infrastructure maintenance too long, it becomes much more expensive in the long run. So that's one of those areas you can't really rely on, unfortunately. Next slide, Dawn. So this is the other question. I talked to a lot of people out there in municipalities, a lot of city managers, finance directors, and mayors, and some have said, you know, we just don't know enough to take action. We're just going to wait and see what happens. Well, there's a cost of waiting. If you defer, let's say you wait and we're not going to make, we're going to do what we need to do with the current year budget. Let's wait until next year and we get into the first or second quarter, see how things develop, and if we have to make cuts, we'll do that then. Well, that's a legitimate strategy. You've just got to understand, if you wait to make those cuts, then the cuts have to be deeper and more profound. And the municipal service contraction will have to be greater because you've lost, you know, a full year or a half a year of savings that you could have taken advantage of. So I think it's really not prudent to wait until you're at the edge of the cliff before you change direction. I think you've got to anticipate that cliff as early as possible and take action sooner than later to make sure that your financial health is safeguarded. The last bullet point is, I'd rather prepare for the worst case and be wrong than simply prepare for the best case and be wrong. You can always reverse decisions if things turn out better. But if things turn out worse, it's really, then your back is against the wall. So the sooner that you can act, the better. Or sooner that you can have a plan in place and you know what you're going to do and can act quickly when triggering events occur, the better. So next slide, Dawn. So I just mentioned triggering events. Looking at critical data points that can affirm some of what I'm saying. Looking at key municipal revenues, looking at other indicators of local economic health like unemployment and business closures and even your own utility payment delinquencies. Those will give you a clue as to what's happening. And as you see some of these sort of adverse data sets, it will trigger some components of your plan. I'm not saying that you do everything today, but you certainly can't wait until, like I say, you're at the edge of the cliff. You've got to know when that cliff is coming and hopefully well in advance and start and take the action then, so as to avoid even deeper cuts and hopefully maintain as much flexibility as you can. I've heard of cities saying, hey, we've got pretty good reserves. We'll eat those up if we have to. You don't want to blow through all your reserves and now you have, now you're the state of Illinois. You have no cushion. And short of having a money printing machine, you're in deep trouble. You don't want to get to that point. Next slide. This is just, you know, you've got to watch the national data as well. It's important to look at local numbers, but watch GDP decline and the U.S. bond market, all these things that are signs of a deteriorating economy. Keep a sharp eye on those as well, and those will help you make good decisions on when to trigger certain expense reductions. Next slide. So this is just kind of a reiterating. If the municipal revenue continues to be diluted over a period of years, the low-hanging fruit is gone. You're using a lot of that up this year, appropriately so. I think you've done a great job. Your staff has done a great job of identifying short-term cuts, but those aren't going to be available next year. Now you're cutting into, there's no fat. It's bone and muscle. And so you're looking, again, to fundamentally change the way municipal government functions, your municipal government functions. And it ultimately means fewer services and fewer employees and different service delivery models that are cheaper. May not be quite as good or effective, but at the end of the day, there's only so much you can afford. So everybody's going to have to adjust expectations. Your residents are going to have to adjust their expectations of what municipal government can do. You, as elected officials, have to adjust expectations as to what things that you can get done and what special initiatives staff can undertake. Because if all of this comes to be, you will have a significantly smaller staff than you have now. And again, that limits their productivity. So everybody's going to have to adjust expectations. That'll be hard, but if there's any silver lining, you're in it with every other municipality. You are not alone. Everybody's going to have to confront these issues. I applaud you for beginning this conversation sooner than later. And the sooner you have a plan in place, the better. But everybody's, I think every municipality is going to have to come to grips with this situation if the things that I'm suggesting come to pass, which I hope they don't. And I think we've got one more slide, Dawn. And this is just, these are hard, painful decisions. You'll get pushback from the community. You'll get pushback from employees, understandably. Everybody's going to second-guess you. It will strain your own relationships as council, so you'll need to work hard to, you know, hard decision. And these are painful decisions that you'll have to grapple with. And it will be tough on the group collectively. It will be important that you work closely with the management team, very collaboratively and closely, that you openly communicate with not only employees, but the community on what's happening and why you have to do certain things. But at the end of the day, that's what you're elected to do. You know, I don't envy you at all. I don't envy the job that lies ahead, the tough decisions that lie ahead. And good, bad, or different, that's what you were elected to make those hard decisions. And the time, I think, is about upon you that you will have to. Again, I hope it's better than what I think it will be, but from my perspective and what I see today, I, there's little room in my mind for optimism. And fortunately, if you do make cuts, they are reversible if things turn out a lot better than we anticipate. So I wish you well. I will be here to provide any perspectives that I can. I don't have the specific details to tell you, here's what you do, X, Y, and Z. It will be a time-consuming process, working closely with your staff and collaborating with one another to figure out what direction that you're going to take as a municipality. But I would say the sooner you begin that process, the better off you will be. Next slide. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I was hoping that you could help guide us through some of the, like, main points of discussion as you see. I mean, I think it's our intention to have these conversations really at every city council meeting from here forward until we have a plan that is kind of solidified with the appropriate triggers in place. So if, you know, if you had a, what should we accomplish this evening?
Well, I think this evening, if you could agree on a process to begin the development of a response plan, and that may be providing direction to the staff, looking beyond the current fiscal year to some degree. I mean, some things will have to happen, but looking beyond the current fiscal year, assuming that the recession brought about by COVID-19 continues into years two, three, and four, and you're looking at, again, significant revenue loss, it's going to require some dramatic cuts in spending. The footprint of your municipal government will have to shrink. Providing some clear direction to the staff to come back with some policy alternatives or some strategic alternatives that could ultimately be part of a plan would, I think, be an appropriate step. That puts a lot of pressure on staff, but hey, they're capable. They understand what's going on. And just because you've come up with alternatives or strategies does not necessarily mean they have to be implemented. As I said, wait until you have predetermined trigger points that occur that, again, give you a comfort level or a discomfort level, that the economy is indeed, that this situation is going to continue two to three years. And then you have no choice but to begin to enact fairly significant cuts. And that means cuts in services or reduced services, changes in how you're delivering services. It will probably mean, you know, significant reductions in staff because in a municipality, most of your cost is employees. And looking to other places where you can, you know, you're going to have other costs that will go up. You know, pension costs, I would guess, are probably going to go up, unfortunately, with less than stellar investment income, although I guess this last month, it was pretty good. But I would say if the economy long-term drags down, investment income will be off. So you're going to have some costs that you have to incur, insurance and, you know, long-term debt. But you also have to look at every possible place you can save money. Debt, certainly, a lot of communities are already starting to look at, you know, restructuring their debt and refinancing debt, taking advantage of lowering interest rates. I think that's a, that may fall under the low-hanging fruit category. But I think giving your staff some very clear direction and then having them come back with a variety of policy alternatives that you can consider probably would be a good outcome from this discussion tonight.
Thank you. Dawn, can you take that off the screen so people can see each other again?
Sure.
Thank you. So I guess the next step, I'd like to kind of hear, and obviously you haven't been able to digest everything that Mark has just shared with us, but I think it would be interesting for us to go around the council chamber and just kind of share what your initial response is and kind of how, what your, you know, just in a brief comment, how, what your philosophy is on addressing this challenge that we have in front of us. And Alderman Williams, because you're Ward 1, you're going to start.
Oh, Joey. No, I agree. Couldn't agree more. An extremely conservative approach. I'd much rather have numerous cuts lined up, almost tiered, from, you know, worst-case scenario, working backwards and have everyone identify that. And I'm not so sure that it's not, it's probably a good idea to have another set of eyes looking, you know, not only, you know, with a, like a chief looking into his own department, but someone else looking at it too, to kind of give them a different idea. I think there's a lot of services that we provide that over the years, we've kind of grown and we're accustomed to them, but they're more on the periphery. We need to get real serious about getting ready to cut those.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
I agree with Alderman Williams. One thing I was thinking about during the presentation is, it's really difficult for a, an employee to basically disintegrate their department or to, you know, it's always easier to point a finger somewhere else and say, and it's, you know, not my fault, it's theirs. I was wondering, is there a consultant, an outside organization that can come in and take a look at what we do and try to identify some of our soft spots? That we could, you know, take advantage of this opportunity that we have to restructure how we deliver our services? You know, it's difficult for the public works manager to say, hey, yeah, we want to cut, you know, and only pick up garbage twice a month as opposed to every week, or whatever the situation is. We had a disinterested third-party look at it and give us their opinions as to what other communities have done, not reinventing the wheel, but, you know, how other communities have restructured their service delivery, all the way from A to Z, you know, looking at the parks and the library and public works, police, fire, our utilities, pretty much everything, and try to kind of reinvent who we are. That's just the only, that's the thing that crossed my mind is, this is a, you know, we can look at this as a real challenge for us, or we can look at it as a potential opportunity to, you know, say, how we did business yesterday is not going to work tomorrow. What can we do differently? And, you know, that'd be what I would like to see done.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Wint?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I think, I agree with what was presented, and I've got concerns that, you know, about getting to that $10 million number. I hope to God that it is less than that, but as you're reading through things and where we are as a state, the number of tests and positive in Rock Island County and Illinois' approach to things as opposed to what other states may be doing, I, my fear is that this is not going to get better anytime soon as far as a revenue change in Moline. So doing this sooner than later, because of all of the savings you do now, it multiplies upon itself if you start now. If you wait, it's like the person who waits to start saving for retirement till they're 50, it doesn't compound itself enough that, to make a difference. If you start early enough, then hopefully, we can come out of it that much faster. And if we see the numbers are shifting, then we can shift. And, you know, if a vaccine comes out in three weeks and everything starts to come back to normal sooner, that would be amazing and we can shift gears. But if it doesn't, and you get behind the eight ball, you know, some of these communities, they are burning through the reserves that they have. I can guarantee you, they are going to be raising taxes next year. And that is just not something we can heap on our residents and businesses as they try to recover from spending through their savings or just trying to get back up and running. So I'm in favor of starting this sooner than later. And again, I look to staff. They are the experts with this. They can go in with a scalpel. They should be able to know in their department, hey, I've got 10 people here. Maybe we can furlough, each furlough a day, or... furlough each furlough a day, or maybe we only need seven people in this department right now because we're not hiring anybody, or whatever the issue is. I know in my business, when my boss came to me and said, hey, you need to cut, you know, X amount of money and X amount of numbers from your, number of hours from your staff, figure it out, you know, within a few hours, you were able to come back with a plan and here's how we're going to do it, and there's where the people are going to be, and this is how we're going to stagger it, and this is how we're going to cover. That's what managers do, and that's what we need our staff to come back to us with on how we can continue to provide services, but lean and mean.
Thank you, Alderman Wint. Alderman Potter?
I guess I'm just a little more patient than some. During Carol's presentation, she told us that several state funding sources were actually, according to IML, reports may be increased. Some of our revenue streams that we are very dependent upon are probably, you know, three months lagged. I think it's important for us to have a good handle on, you know, in the coming months when those reports come in. I'm more than happy to have this dialogue. I'm just not so sure that there's as much meat on the bone as some people think.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Weyer?
So I just want to say thank you to Mark Peterson because I think that that really summed up a lot of the thoughts that we have and that I have, and specifically, like critical data points, you know, I think there are certain things that we do have to look at. In there, I think it said something about, you know, tracking business closures and whatnot, but I also think we need to maybe track, you know, our business development as well. And I think really how we come out of this and how we can be creative in making sure that we come out of this faster is also just as important as, I guess, tracking the declines of the numbers and so forth. And I guess I don't really have any answers to how we do this, but I think we need to take some time and try to figure out, you know, creatively what we can do and maybe look to the past. I thought that was something that Mark brought out in his presentation, looking back at other recessions and depressions and maybe looking at some of the ways others have been successful at coming out of these things. And we got this major redevelopment, you know, and I think we're in a situation where if we manage this correctly, you know, maybe we come out of it a little faster and so.
Thank you, Alderman Weyer. Alderman Skumaker?
I just would echo the prudent approach. I think we've, we're off to a good start. We do have, nobody's mentioned tonight, the bonds that are paying off, so that will give us a little more flexibility as we go forward. But I think we're on the right approach here and we need to stick to it, keep that going. And I would echo the thanks to Mark. I think your comments strengthened our approach. Based on your comments, I think we've certainly gone down the right path so far.
Thank you, Alderman Skumaker. Alderman Waldron?
I echo Alderman Potter's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Berg?
I just really want to say thank you too to J.D. and Carol for, you know, taking the lead in helping us all navigate this and know that we're all in this together and we're going to, we're going to get through it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berg. Well, something that I'd like for us to think about is kind of the planning component of working through what our options are going to be depending on what the future holds. And so I, I mean, I think that we can integrate all of our ideas in that way, that we should be prepared for what lies ahead and be in a position to trigger the responses that are already pre-planned in the case that, on the projections that Carol is proposing do actually happen. Or if they don't, then we take a different course. But I feel uncomfortable with just waiting to see what happens and then coming up with a plan. So I would almost like to move beyond our planning window of this year and start looking at next year. So the decisions that we make this year, how does that position us for going into next year? And I agree that we need to take note of some of those payments falling off the books, and so we'll have some additional cash to work with when that happens, but it likely won't be enough. So Carol, can I lean on your expertise for a minute? I know that you haven't done any formal work into next year, but have you put any thought into it?
Not to a great degree because we've just spent so much time here kind of retooling the current year. But in preliminary talks with a couple of department heads, as well as with Keith and some members of our staff, we've actually kind of kicked around the thought, you know, we've been doing all this line item detail changes for the current budget, almost to start with this very lean and mean budget right now, roll it forward, starting from there. I mean, not going, not letting departments just go back and ask for a lot of additional new things, just starting out lean and mean and then seeing, you know, working through if there's services that need to be looked at or prioritized, to kind of look at it from that effect, but.
What are you thinking about the issue that we do have some capital deferrals? I mean, is, is that, I mean, how do we handle that? The things that we just aren't doing this year and pushing out into next year, like the vehicle purchases, that kind of stuff? Because don't we have to come up with a different way to save that same amount of money next year because that way won't be an option anymore? Or am I thinking?
We need to kind of review that in more detail, but the plan that Sarah, Mark, and J.D. had put together does work its way through over a five-year period. I mean, we are stringing out the useful life over the five years and then bringing some purchases back in. It's stretching everything out over a five-year period. So it's not like we're all of a sudden just going to double up next year, it's going to be spread out. And the same thing with all of our facility, capital improvements, those types of things. Again, we're doing the urgent things like roof repairs or HVAC systems that need to be repaired, but other things that are more cosmetic, Sarah's been trying really hard to stretch those out. And I know on the capital projects, capital improvements, you know, we're thankful that our ASBID amounts that came through and with the fund balances that we had with our motor fuel tax and with our regular CIP program and utility tax. Fortunately, this year, we're not going to defer anything as we had originally budgeted, but if those funds drop in the future, those will be smaller programs going forward. So we're going to have to have the engineers take a look long-term, you know, what's our five-year CIP plan going to look like if we have, if we have less revenue?
Thank you, Carol. Alderman Wint had a comment?
Yeah, I'd be interested because I guess from the presentation right now, we're, this year, we've saved about $8.5 million because we keep saying that we've got about 1.5 million left to get to that 10 million. But how much of that 8.5 is, are things that we can't replicate next year? We did it this year because we had surplus out of this reserves or we deferred all these purchases till next year. Like, just, and I'm not going to hold you to a number, but is, you know, eight, of the 8.5 million dollars, things that we aren't going to be able to replicate? Or is half of it stuff that we aren't going to be able to replicate? Or what would be your determination if this continued into next year? How much of that are savings that are sustainable?
And I truly have to take a look at it. Obviously, some of the changes in the capital purchases, we aren't going to talk about that so much because we're trying to work through those five-year plans. But in the general fund, that two and a half million, I mean, it did cut out virtually all training. That's not going to be sustainable, ongoing, because there's certifications that need to take place. Different contracted services, just like in our, you know, we have to go through it. I would say sustainable out of the eight. If I was just to kind of shoot a number, again, it would change the way we do business, there's no question. It would absolutely change the way we do things. But I would say 40 to 50% of what we've cut. Yeah, going 100%, I mean, we can hunker down with our training and all, a lot of these operating expenses, but it's more of a one-time, I mean, at some point, you're going to have, you're going to have to bring some of those expenditures down in order to support the operations. But I can take a closer look at that. That's a very good question.
So even if it was, let's say, 50% of it, if we're trying to fill 1.5 million this year, next year, we're going to have to be trying to fill about 5.5 million. That be correct?
I mean, unless, like I say, unless we just totally change the way we do business. And I give an example, you know, like the library, we changed that funding level, and I know their board is now trying to come up with a change in their operations on how they're going to operate going forward. If they're able to come up with that, you know, that savings will be ongoing. But if they're not able to sustain that kind of a reduction in funding from the general fund, you know, that's going to have to be a discussion item. And then the same thing with the Parks Department, you know, they've cut back on their pool and recreation services. Long-term, are we wanting to bring back all those types of amenities that our city is used to? Or do we have to change the course? And if we change the course, those will be long gone, you know, longer-term savings going forward.
Thank you, Carol. I appreciate it. And I think that that illustrates that even this 1.5 that we're talking about, it's, we've all talked about how tough it is to fill that gap, you know, just for this year. If we wind up finding ourselves in a position where we're going to have to fill, you know, two or three times that amount next year, you're right, things are going to be completely different. And so that's why, to Mark Peterson's point, I think making some of these changes sooner than later, like I said, I hope to God that things turn and get better, but if they don't, if we haven't made those changes now, I have no idea how we're going to do it next year and triple the amount of discretionary that we're going to have to get rid of.
Carol, you know, to Mark's point, Mark, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to say something in regards to that, Mark?
If I could add just a quick comment, you know, if you assume that, let's say you could take all of the cuts that you made this year and simply transfer them to next year's budget, let's say all of them are transferable, you can bite the bullet on travel and training and defer vehicle purchases and do everything again, that, you're, you know, you could survive that, assuming that your revenue stabilized. That assumes your revenue does not continue to fall. If you do that, and let's just say, for example, revenue falls another 10%, now, now you're, now that doesn't work. So if, you know, if you assume that the revenue stops dropping at the end of this fiscal year and we hit a floor, well, okay, that makes it a little bit easier to deal, I'm not saying it's easy, it's still going to be challenging, but the concern that I have is if revenue continues to decline next year, then even if you enact all of the cuts that you enacted this year, you're behind the eight ball next year. Now, Carol, is that an accurate characterization of the situation?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, no doubt, absolutely. I agree with that.
So if the economic decline continues into next year, that will just exacerbate what you've, what you've got to deal with. Even if you could roll over every cut that you made this year into next year, you still will have a significant shortfall.
You know, Carol, that is kind of what I was thinking about with the capital. So when I saw that spreadsheet that had the capital deferrals into next year, there was an assumption on the revenue line that it was going to increase, I think it was 3% more than the assumed revenue for this year. So it took the cuts for this year, but then it, the projections intended that the revenue would not only be what we had originally budgeted for this year, but would actually increase like with inflation. So I want to make sure that we are taking into consideration that that is likely not to happen. But, I mean, I haven't looked at those in a while, so it may already be adjusted. But I do want to touch on Mark's point about the pensions because I'm worried about our pensions. I'm glad that we're holding the line on our pension investment this year. I think that's very important. But if we don't have the returns on the pension as we expected, I think that we were at something like 6.75 or something. Carol, do you remember what our actuarial plan was for our pensions?
You mean as far as the ongoing funding?
Well, no, what we thought we were going to have for interest, what we thought we were going to have for returns on that investment.
Yeah. It's an average of 7% across the board.
So.
An average of 7% for this current year.
So that's my concern is that we're making an investment this year of, and that was an investment that was associated with that assumption. I don't know if that's fair to assume that the market's going to meet that 7% this year and we're going to be in a place where we expected to be, or that we can make that assumption for next year. So I'm concerned about that as well, that we may need to allocate additional money just to the base of the pension to bridge that gap of missing interest.
Very valid point. And that, it'll be critical when we see, when we receive those actuarial reports here in the next few weeks.
Okay. I'd like to, maybe Alderman Waldron, if you don't mind, I want to better understand your perspective of kind of waving and seeing. What would be a trigger that would, that would be where you're seeing what you need to see? I'm just curious from your perspective.
Oh, I don't have any comment, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said. You don't have any compliment?
I don't have any comment at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Potter, maybe you can help me out with that.
I don't, I don't think I have much to say beyond what I said, other than I think one of the things that, when we keep talking about next year's budget is, I think there will be some pent-up demand for a lot of things. We have no idea, let's be honest, part of this is the unknown. We have no idea how long this is going to last or what kind of position we're going to be in, but at some point in time, when an economic recovery begins, there'll be a lot of pent-up demand, number one. And number two, with regard to your comment about pensions, I think, I think that's the kind of thing that we don't want to bring into this discussion because that, that doesn't have as much to do with our annual year-to-year budget or the way that we deliver services because we have probably, what, 20 years to attain the level of funding that is mandated by the state. And these kind of blips come along every so often, they obviously came along about 10 years ago. We'll see another one, but I'm not going to be too worried if there's, if there's a problem. It's nothing to be, not to be concerned about, but a one-year issue is not that big in terms of, you know, 20 years of pension liabilities.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any additional guidance for us of how we should move forward? You've kind of heard the feedback of the individual council members.
I need to unmute myself. Not really, other than I think, you know, the time, you know, the time is of the essence to have that hard conversation, that if indeed things continue to deteriorate, and everyone's right, we don't know for sure what's going to happen, and hopefully they won't be as bad as we think. But I think it would be. But I think it would be unwise not to make some, at least make some decisions and some plans in the event that revenues continue to deteriorate and this thing extends into, well into next year and maybe beyond next year. And again, as I said earlier, even though you have plans for restructuring and major cuts, if the numbers don't bear out the need, you don't have to go forward. But I would much rather have that plan in place and ready to go. And when you begin to see these triggering events occur, these data points that clearly continue to slide, you're ready to enact those cuts. And as several of you have said, the sooner, the better. If you're gonna have to make cuts, the sooner you make them, that will mean the cuts don't have to be quite as severe as if you waited a year or so to make them. They're still gonna be severe, but they won't be quite as bad. And hopefully, you'll be able to maintain some services that otherwise you wouldn't be able to maintain had you waited and made cuts when you faced a crisis. So there is a lot of uncertainty. I'll be the first to admit. And I know Carol and I talked about it. You've almost got to look at it weekly, if not daily, to see how the numbers are changing and the numbers are moving. And if, once the economy is, you know, quote reopened, I'm not sure what that means, that some of the social distancing mandates are relaxed, we'll see what happens. But I, from what I am seeing, I think a twenty percent employment rate is likely to continue. That's, that's earth shattering. That's, I mean, we've never seen that kind of unemployment rate since the Depression. And with a twenty percent unemployment rate, it's such a drag on the economy. It's hard to, it's hard to even imagine. But, you know, maybe things will rebound quickly. I hope they do. But again, I would much rather prepare for the worst, as we talked about, hope for the best. And, you know, nobody's gonna, nobody can fault you for being prepared for the worst case scenario or a bad case scenario. I can't imagine how anybody could find that to be inappropriate. Now, the tough question will be when you have to trigger those cuts. And hopefully, you won't have to, but better be prepared.
So I think, I mean, I really appreciate your guidance and your expertise on this, Mark. And I also appreciate the individual Alderman's different perspectives, because I think that it well represents the community that we're representing. You know, some people are feeling more confident in our recovery and some people are feeling more concerned about the recovery. And so I think that's fair. But what I don't think is fair is to leave staff without clear direction. And so I'm looking towards you, counsel, to, I don't know if you want to do it by motion, and we can kind of debate some direction for staff, but they need to have clear direction, because this is difficult enough to navigate without understanding what's expected of them from our policy perspective. I'm long pausing. Alderman Wynn?
I guess, this is where, and I mentioned this in my comments earlier. I mean, I think we're at a situation, based on what staff's presented, we've got this 1.5 million dollar gap that we keep talking about. I think that there's probably needs to be some discussion on how we get to that, that 8.5. But let's make the assumption right now that we're okay with the 8.5 that was originally. Are you looking for us just to give them a direction that say, hey, come back with a implementation plan to save that 1.5 million dollars between now and the end of the year? Or are you looking for specific, like, hey, let's, you know, reduce mowing cemeteries to, you know, twice a month versus, you know, I don't know exactly what you're looking for as far as getting into the weeds. I think it's staff's.
Yeah, I wouldn't encourage that. I don't think that's policy. I mean, I think that, you know, giving staff some direction of what we're looking for and then having them come back to us. And then just because we're representing constituents, we would probably want to be influencing any service impacts that would be, you know, proposed. But I think, I think we're at a time now where we're into this a bit and we know what the phased relief is from the governor's perspective, you know, kind of the stages of it. And we know it's not like a clean cut and everybody jumps back in the pool. And then we, I mean, we just, by the stock market, I mean, there's other indicators that make me think that Mark Peterson is correct, that this is more of a big picture thing. I think that it would be thoughtful for the council to maybe ask staff to consider, I don't know, two scenarios or three scenarios, so that, you know, we do 1.5, the additional 1.5 this year, and then maybe make an assumption that we're gonna have depressed revenues next year to the tune of five million. We'll be able to make some of that up with the offsetting debt that falls off, you know, that kind of thing. So 1.5 this year, five million next year, nothing more this year and nothing next year. And maybe a third scenario is something a little bit more conservative. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't mean to be heavy-handed with you all, but I don't think it's fair for us to just stop talking tonight and leave staff to not really understand what they're supposed to do next. Alderman Parker?
So we talk about the debt dropping off, but aren't we going to be potentially assuming all that debt and then maybe more as we acquire properties underneath the bridge in the next eighteen months?
That's possible. I'm assuming that we would have to come up with some kind of financing for that beyond what our revenues are right now. I don't think we were planning on buying properties out of our.
No, but wouldn't we, if, as bonds fall off, wouldn't we be having to bond for, to purchase those properties and then making the associated payments? I mean, I don't think it's gonna be a zero, you know, we're gonna all of a sudden have this huge windfall of money that we don't have to pay it back for bonds, unless we choose not to purchase the land underneath the bridge, which would be a big departure from where we've been planning for the last several years. I just kind of want to get up to speed with what everybody's thought was. Because I, you know, Kevin, maybe, maybe this is where you jump in, because I don't understand financing as well as you do. But if I pay off a car, that's great. I don't have that car payment. But then when I buy another car, it's not like I don't have a car payment again, in my simple mind. That's why I look at it.
I guess when you started bringing up the property, I wondered about, you know, how all of this will affect the purchase prices as well. We had a certain dollar amount in mind, based on what we felt the value of the property was, but the value of that property may not be reflective of what we had assumed it would be when we came up with those numbers a year or two ago. So there may be a significant difference in the purchase price and the effects of that payment as well.
You know, I thought about that just the last couple of days in talking to some developers that are doing some work in Moline and looking at some projects in Moline. And I wonder if that's true, if real estate is gonna drop off, because it feels like such a, like, at least right now, people are thinking that's a better investment than other investments, like the stock market. But I don't know. Alderman Wynn?
Well, I can speak to some anecdotal, I mean, we don't have enough data yet to see how this is going to affect things. But what I've seen is actually some uptick in values of properties, especially in the residential world. Some of that is because of lack of inventory. But I think, to echo the mayor, you know, the volatility of putting money in the stock market versus putting it in rental income and in those sorts of things, there seems to be more people that are sticking their money in property. Now, as far as big developments, as far, you know, building a big hotel and those sorts of things, you know, there may be some sectors of real estate that may be less. But I have not seen a drop in property values. In fact, I've seen the opposite so far. I mean, so we'll see what ends up.
My point was raw land would be maybe affected negatively.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, but we might also have the benefit of developers not needing to be incentivized as aggressively too, if they're wanting to put their money in something other than stock or investors, I guess I should describe them, not developers. All right, do I have any, do we have any consideration for offering a motion to guide staff? Anyone, please? Alderman Williams? Alderman?
I'm willing to, I think, ask staff to come back with a variety of options for the 1.5 million. So come back with more than 1.5 million in options. JD, I know we've been talking about this for a while. What's kind of a timeframe that you would feel comfortable with coming back to us with that? And I think to the mayor's point, and based on the conversation I had with Carol, you know, a backfill of five million for next year, how would those, how would some of these cuts then affect next year's budget if we, if we kept them going, you know? Whether it's leaf vacuuming, savings this year and next year, or whether it's reducing seasonals, you know, this year and next year, or, you know, what those things look like. So I guess I'd make that motion, 1.5 this year and five for next year, but many options.
Second?
We have a motion by Alderman Wynn and a second by Alderman Schoenmaker. Was that correct, Alderman Schoenmaker?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Schoenmaker, do you have a comment?
Yes, Your Honor. I would just ask that if there's a service cut, for instance, Alderman Wynn had mentioned leaf vacuuming, that we address in that conversation, how we would handle whatever alternative to leaf vacuuming would be and what the cost of that would be, that we're not just cutting it and not having a, an alternative removal plan.
So I think that's very good guidance, that if something is gonna be cut, kind of like they've been doing, is providing what the offsetting other adjustment would be, that would be the prudent adjustment if you're doing something like that. Alderman Wynn?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, yeah, that how they've been setting that up on, here's the cut, here's what it's going to, the offsetting cost, and then here's what the net savings is. And as we've talked about with some of these things, you know, the first, you know, thirteen to twenty-six weeks, maybe the savings isn't that much. But then you bring that into year two and the cost savings ramps up. So to see that both in this fiscal year, 2020, and then also how that will affect things in 2021, I think will be very helpful for us making decisions on which of those many options we're gonna have to pull the trigger on.
Is there any other comment, question, discussion? Alderman Parker?
When, do we have a time as to when we want these, this proposal back to us?
Let's see if the motion carries and then we can have a discussion with staff about that, instead of adding it to the motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I believe the motion carries with six aye votes, and I've got two nay votes, one from Alderman Potter and one from Alderman Waldron. Motion carries. I think somebody needs to be on mute, and they're not. JD, so with that direction of coming back with alternatives and moving into next year, and Carol, this is a question for you too. What, what kind of, I know that we're doing updates every week. We've got a meeting next week and then we skip a week. What are you thinking, maybe in three weeks?
Yeah. And like I said, Allison and I, we started meeting with the departments, talking about, I think, just some of these things. And I appreciate somebody's comment. I think it was Alderman Parker that said, and Alderman Williams, I guess, kind of set a variation of it takes somebody else to kind of take a look at. I've told you before, Mayor, I know I sound like a broken record sometimes, and I tell you, I look at things through my thirty-year lens. And it's nice to see somebody else's perspective and come and look at it sometimes, because they see it differently. So as Allison and I kind of go through that and talk to the departments, it'll take us a little while to walk through this. So if I don't think I can meet that three weeks, I still want to maybe incrementally come to you and talk about where I'm at, kind of tell you, you know, where we are, and then tell you when I think I can have it all.
And Carol, what are you thinking for your financials? I think you had mentioned that you thought maybe the iterations would be a little easier now that you had it laid out, but I don't know if that's, is three weeks, does that make sense to you? Or is your work on the tail end of it after the department's kind of mulled over? Carol, I think you're muted. Don's gonna unmute you.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
We can certainly do our best. And like JD said, the key thing is, if we're feeling we end up and we need more time, we'll have to come back to you. But we will continue to keep you updated as we work through the process. The key thing is, is I guess we want to make sure we've given ample thought, that it's well thought out. We're not making hasty decisions. It's gotta be something that, you know, it absolutely makes sense to do, because we want it, you know, we want, we want to make good recommendations for you to consider.
Okay. Then I would, I just make the recommendation, I know we did those two-on-twos, but I didn't think they were that helpful, because I was more interested in what other people's perspective was when I was isolated in that discussion. So I'd rather keep it on the council floor, if y'all don't mind, instead of breaking off into the two-by-twos. Does anybody have any concern about having these kinds of communications on the council floor, so everybody can hear what everybody else's comments are? All right, then we will, we will tentatively target three weeks from now to follow up. But Carol, if you don't mind, we'd still be looking for any updates that you have next week on the financials, if something comes across or we have something. And what just came out from the state level with the capital projects, that's something different than what you were describing, wasn't it, JD?
It's a part of that rebuild Illinois. It's a grant program for shovel-ready projects. So I think it's a real quick push to try and get some, it's around 25 million, I think.
Do you know what our allocation is? Or do we have an allocation?
It just got announced this afternoon, but I'll immerse myself in it and see what I can find out.
There comes dirt.
The one you're talking about, Mayor, is an application process, so it's not allocated. Our projects compete with others, so.
Twenty-five million. What's that for us, for Capita? What was the, well, I guess that's separate, though, the downstate, upstate. All right, is there, does anybody have any other comments? Or Mark, do you have any closing comments for us?
No, I don't. Thank you for the opportunity to share my perspectives. Good luck. Anything I can do to help, you know how to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Do any of the council members have any comments regarding the work session? Don't see anybody. So I'd like to open it up for public comment. Janine, did we have any public comment this evening? All right, hearing no public comment, I would like to close out of our committee of the whole and go into the council agenda this evening. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and there will be no invocation this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Wynn? You may be unmuted, Alderman Wynn. You may be away from your seat.
He's right off.
We'll come back.
He's present.
We'll come back to him, Alderman. Okay, Alderman Potter? Oh, there he is.
Present, sorry.
That's okay. Alderman Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoonmaker? I'm sorry, Alderman Schoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting minutes of May 5th, 2020, and the March financial reports. Resolutions. Council Bill 1061-2020, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a Sixth Amendment to the site license agreement between the City of Moline and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to allow New Singular to install updated communications equipment to space the leases on, I'm sorry, to the space it leases on the city's water tower located at 1531 17th Avenue, Moline. Council Bill 1062-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a master services agreement with Paymentis Corporation for an initial term of five years. Council Bill 1063-2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to adopt the updated City of Moline Community Development Block Grant Policies and Procedures Manual with a temporary amendment to include Appendix J COVID-19 Pandemic, Governor's Order 2020-07.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Alderman Berg, you may be on mute.
Oh, she just, uh, sent, put a message that her computer just locked up. So she's going to try to log back on.
Okay, we'll roll call around her, is that all right? Sure. Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays? Motion carries. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Um, I think this evening to go around for our miscellaneous council business, I'll just call through the council boards, if that's all right, or the city wards. I think somebody might mean to be on mute and they're not. Alderman Williams? Nothing this evening? Alderman Parker?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Alderman, uh, Went?
Uh, just thanks to, uh, Mark and to staff, uh, for continuing to, to work on all these, uh, things that, uh, isn't pleasant for anybody, but needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Alderman Potter?
Uh, echo those comments. Thanks to everyone who's trying to work through all these, uh, difficult times. Nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Moyer?
Agreed, but nothing else.
Thank you. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Uh, nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron?
Nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Berg? Alderman Berg, did you have anything for our council business? Um, I, uh, perhaps you may have something in a minute, but I did want to address a couple of things with the council. And one is the, um, virtual state of the city. Um, I think it went reasonably well. I received reasonably positive feedback on that. And, um, I don't know if, if you all had any feedback or any concerns about the way that was managed? Hearing none?
I, I, I thought it was, uh, very good and, uh, um, uh, I, I saw the sausage being made, because my wife works at, uh, D Films and so, uh, uh, it was, uh, you guys did a heck of a job. I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into it, right?
Yeah, D Films was a good partner in that. And D Films, uh, I, I mean, you all probably remember this, but they were, um, planned to record the event live and they transferred that commitment over to create that video. And, um, I thought it met the, met the needs of the day. Um, and then I also wanted to update you that we are going live with, uh, the platform Forward. And so you've had updates on that. It's the small business platform where the small business profiles are pre-populated and they're able to navigate to, uh, get to the programs, which might be grants, loans, um, uh, payment deferrals that are, um, that they qualify for and are helpful to their business. And so that will be a press conference, a virtual press conference this Thursday at 2:00 PM. And so I'll make sure that you all have invitations to log in if you'd like to be a part of that. Um, and then there'll be a representative from the state of Illinois there as well to give a little summary of what programs they have coming out and how this tool will, um, you know, how they think that tool will impact it. There, uh, it's a representative from D C E O. It'll be joining that event. Um, it'll be East Moline, Rock Island and Moline. And so that's the update for that. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that y'all need to know about. But next week, we'll just have a, a regular council meeting. And then the week after that, we don't have a council meeting scheduled. And that was my intention, is just leave that week open and the council's comfortable with that. Good. Alderman Berg, did you have anything, any council business that you wanted to share?
Uh, no, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to now turn it over to JD. JD, do you have anything you'd like to share with the council?
Um, I, I want to take one opportunity just to share some good news, because I know we have up and downs and different times. But, um, the Illinois EPA notified us that, uh, we were part of a study with the, um, Smart Energy Design Assistance Center at the University of Illinois. And the EPA, I think, kind of commissioned them to do it. And, uh, so we sent in our information on both North Slope and South Slope wastewater treatment plants and compared with 52 other comparable plants. We were number one, energy efficient at North Slope, and number four, uh, most energy efficient at South Slope. So I think, yeah, that's a testimony to our investment up there at North Slope, those blowers, and that have really paid off. And that, um, even though we know we've got room to improve at South Slope, we still benchmark well with our peers.
Wonderful. Thank you JD for sharing that.
Thanks.
Do you have anything else?
That's all.
We should be more animate. Um, how about any of the other? Chief? Chief's coming to the podium.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. Uh, Peace Officers Memorial Day falls every year on May 15th. Uh, it specifically honors law enforcement officers killed or disabled in the line of duty. This week, May 10th to May 16th is known as National Police Week, which recognizes all our police officers who dedicate their careers to serving our community. I'd like to draw your attention to, uh, two unfortunate incidents in central Illinois in the past year where law enforcement officers have been killed in the line of duty. Fulton County Deputy Sheriff Troy Chisholm was shot and killed on June 25th, 2019 while responding to a battery disturbance call.